It gives me a transcript of my calling. And it all auto filters. That's kind of handy because sometimes I make calls from restaurants and I don't have my contacts yet. So I don't want to not answer my house or the one answer. Smile, boy, do you know? Good day?
I wanted to grab a corner, but we're getting on your.
It's three minutes, too.
There's a four.
There's a four.
There's a four, alright. Scott saves the day.
Who would have thought a Scott's early?
Your Chromebooks working this month, Amanda? Did they get you a brand new one or did he fix something?
I don't think so. It has a kind of like Google like how to turn them on and it's either press these four buttons at the same time, which is impossible. You can't even do it. Or, or the power button.
Yes, it is.
Are you on Scott? Sound, so.
No.
Power, eat, drink.
You're better?
You're better?
The short and sweet, we're better? Seven fifty now. Yeah, Jeff upperdick. Nine thirty, nine thirty because Johnson had a lot to say.
I think the part that gets us is the superintendent.
Yeah.
Adam seven.
Should be superintendent, it's word.
Double I here.
Word.
Word.
Good.
Good. Tom?
Third?
Third? Mission?
Yeah, I was here around before the last. I said I'm running a Christian support for four years.
Oh yeah. Oh yeah. Make him suffer it out, dude.
Okay, cool.
Yeah. You and Amanda are kind of Chromebook inept. You get special Chromebooks. Big screen. Big on, big on button.
Sit around all day, you know?
You know it, buddy. That's a pretty good idea.
Call the meeting to order. It is the mission of Montague area public schools to educate and inspire all students to become motivated, articulate, productive, and successful citizens for today, tomorrow, and forever. We're going to start with the pledge of allegiance.
Geez, I just had a freak call.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item three on the agenda is roll call.
Mr. Ah.
Here.
Mr. Johnson. Mrs. Francis.
Here.
Mrs. Dahl. Here. Mr. Rexizer.
Here.
Mr. Snit.
Here.
Mrs. Newauer.
Here.
Item four on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Moved by Scott, support by Tom. Discussion? Can you add the change to there? Okay. All those in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passed. Item five is the consent agenda. Moved by Tom, support by Scott. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passed. Item six on the agenda is public comment portion. We don't have any public comments tonight, correct? Alright. Public comments will be accepted at this time. Each statement shall be limited to five minutes in duration. Participants shall direct all comments to the board and not to staff or other participants. The board welcomes public comment but does not respond to citizens' concerns at its meeting. At the citizens' request and the board's discretion, the superintendent or designate will respond in a timely manner. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purposes of conducting the school district's business and does not be considered a public community meeting. We don't have anybody on the list. Is there anybody that would like to speak publicly at this time? Alright. Item seven on the agenda is reports.
Alright, our favorite time of the day. Principal meaningful minutes. Principal meaningful minutes. Who would like to begin? Sandy?
Well, it's been very busy since I last stood before you. Thankfully, we have the snowplows come because we don't need it though some Halloween and the day after. We also have fire trucks safety at all the MAC and RRO, our first and second graders for the show's farm. And we really enjoyed the drive the tractor to school day. Love that. Remind me my hometown always. Parent teacher conferences were very successful. We had ninety-one percent participation at RRO and ninety-six percent at the MAC. And then Halloween came and it went off without its pitch despite the fact that the electricity was going on during parties. But it was, it was a lot of fun. The MAC also traveled to Weezy Spookly and the FFA came over and did their activities with the students at the MAC. And we are kicking off our annual food drive right now to help our families in need and so that will go up until Thanksgiving. And our staff is kicking off a book study. We were going to do it on that PD day, but we've had to postpone it a little bit. We're studying the shifting of balance, which is studying the science of reading to help us make more informed choices and choosing language or materials. And two celebrations. Congratulations to our RRO third grade teacher, Daryl Waller. She won the back to school giveaway on Facebook for the Michigan Agriculture in the Classroom Farm Crate subscription. And that's from Greenstone Farm Credit Services and she will receive a crate full of farm fresh lessons to use in her classroom. And also congratulations to second grade teacher Summer Williams and our counselor Julie, excuse me, Plankett. They're creating backpacks that they got from a Kickstarter, Kickstarter to career grant. And it's for students to play with every set and the backpacks are aligned to the six career pathways. And will give kids an alternative play with an exploration of the different careers. And the ideas are that there's like construction vehicles and building things, vet tools, stuffed animals, gardening tools. And the hope is for those students who don't like to engage in playground equipment or perhaps play football or soccer, the two most important things that happen in the playground, that they can still engage in some cooperative playing and explore some of the ideas in it. That's all for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Busy around NBC. So winter sports underway. We got basketball and competitive cheer going on. This is our major one season. We break things up into shorter seasons, so we got our eight beats now. We're about ready about Christmas time for that. First marking period ended. As now we're now into our second week. So we got a great, successful first marking period and things are underway in the shift. This is getting to the end of our first big long chunk of learning that we do in the September and October. Don't have many breaks in there. Now we're kind of into that part of the year. We have got a number of breaks, couple weeks of Thanksgiving, a couple weeks of Christmas. So lots for us to do and enjoy during that time. Our robotics team is wrapping things up. They're going to have their competition on Saturday at Freeport High School. If you're out and about on Saturday and you want to go see some really cool robots built by middle school kids, swing by Freeport High School and check that out. That is free to all who want to go in. We have our first community lunch is Tuesday. We're going to do that right before Thanksgiving, so that'll be kind of our big Thanksgiving fest there. As always, you are all invited to come to our community lunch. If you haven't done it, I highly suggest you come by and check that out. We sit at tables of eight. We serve family style. Pass things around, please, if they do. It's just about us being together, sharing a meal as a community. And so that is a really great event. So our lunches, our first lunch is eleven oh five, our second lunch is twelve oh five. You want to come to either one of those, let me know. We will make sure we have a spot for you. We are also in the midst of the Penny Awards. This is one of our big fundraisers that we do for the community. We have classes competing against each other. We're collecting dollars, change. And we donate all that money to local food bank and to the old newsies. And then they provide holiday baskets for families at Thanksgiving and Christmas. Typically, we're about $2,000 a year for this, so those two organizations really count in our donations and report to it. So kids are having a lot of fun with the competition of that, so we appreciate the work they're doing for our community.
Thank you.
Alright, at the high school, we had a Halloween spirit week, which was lots of fun planned by our Renaissance class. Kind of culminated in our annual Anything But A Backpack Day where we saw lots of different things, including golf bags, kayak, even a refrigerator. So very interesting, anything but a backpack. And then we also brought back Halloween costumes to the high school. That's been gone for a few years and we did a great job with it. Lots of kids dressed up. NHS had their induction and there are twenty-four new members of the NHS, so congratulations to them. We had several students attend the FFA National Convention along with the DECA conference at Michigan State. Seniors are already getting ready for graduation. They met last week and are talking about caps and gowns and all things graduation. Graduation is May seventeenth. Sounds very early to me, but that's the date, so put that on your calendars. Fall sports finished. Kami Erickson was our cross-country runner that qualified for state this year. So a bunch of the team got to go down to MIS with her. We had thirteen first-team all-conference nods for soccer, volleyball, golf, and football. When our sports practices begin to day, some basketball guys and their girls' basketball starts next week. Everything else started today. Today, we celebrated World Kindness Day, Good Vibes Only. Our students sent it, welcomed students at the door with high fives and good mornings and some music. There were a couple of classes that handed notes out at the end of the day to each other. We had a little cart for the teachers to get some treats and just lots of good things happening with that. And we are going to, like Sandy said, we did not have our PD day on November first, but we are doing work here at the high school around culture and climate and we're going to continue working on our Montague High School experience together.
Thank you. Alright, next on to a DECA report for the consideration of the calendar of events. So with us today, we have.
Jordan Cole.
Jordan. Yes, thank you so much. Jordan Cole.
Hello, good evening. I am Jordan Cole and here for Montague Department. I am here to present our chap, what our chapter has completed so far this year and what we're going to have coming up. Yeah. Alright, sorry. So a brief history of our Montague Department, DECA chapter. It was established in nineteen ninety-six. We currently have seventy-five members in three classes in Montague School. And we operate a school-based enterprise, which is more widely known as our school school. So the first thing we've completed this year is we had entrepreneurship students compete, complete market day, which is where students will create their own company almost and they'll sell their own handmade objects. And they get to keep the profits that they make. And we did this during parent-teacher conferences back in October. And it worked, it went very well for everyone. And then as Mrs. Summer mentioned, we had our state leadership conference in Lansing at the Road College of Business at Michigan State. And for that, students were in a workshop of their choice, multiple workshops throughout the day. And we learned a lot about entrepreneurship, economics, finance, all sorts of things. It was very educational for people who went. So that's what we have done so far this year. At our upcoming events and field trips, we have DECA districts in December at Grand Valley State. We have our DECA State Conference in March in Detroit. And then we have our DECA International Career Development Conference, which if we make it, is in Anaheim, California in April. Thank you for your time. Do you guys have any questions?
Great job, Jordan. Alright, moving on to the short superintendent comments. You can see there are some new hires within the support staff. Libby Howell is being hired as an LRE aide at our RRO. Just many different experiences. It was here with the Montague Taylor Greiner, is a Montague High School graduate, looking to become a driver here within the district. And Kenan Vanderstel is looking to come back to us as a reestrator as well, back again. For us as well. Moving on to other comments, I'd just like to note, we did have two committee meetings. Last week, we added a policy meeting, obviously getting preparedness for the policy first readings today, along with employee community relations meeting. We went over some of the MTA contract update. This is an employee community relations meeting. MTA contract updates, talked around graduation boards. We asked to move that to a committee prior. We will be looking to make some changes of sort, but just narrowing it to those that are connected to the academic or co-curricular world. So that will be, we're looking to change around what we're brought, but we will not expand upon the other ones. Village results, as you saw in the email that I did send out for on the news. The operating village renewal did pass, sixty-one to thirty-nine percent. Specific townships, as you saw, City of Montague, sixty-eight, thirty-two. Flavics Township, fifty-three to forty-seven. Grand Township, fifty-six to forty-four. Montague Township, sixty-seven, thirty-three. Out of Township, they need to feed forty-seven, fifty-three, but with that being said, there was only seventeen over boats as that large area within our area. On Whitehall Township as well, with ten boats, forty, sixteen ended. And then Whitehall, uh, for township, fifty-seven, forty-three as well. And then, and then that's eighteen as well. Also, just wanted to update, please look at your email as I'll be sending out, looking at a vision aspect of the district and not to look as an overhaul for the whole district, but kind of taking a lot of the things that were in the blueprint and making it more user-friendly and around the things that we do as a district. So I will be sharing, have a little bit nicer visual around principles of organizational excellence along with just a spreadsheet of sort where it kind of breaks it down to the whole child experience when looking at academic success, student engagement, career preparation, respectful responsibility and healthy. And looking at our parent giver, parent and community section. It breaks down to parent engagement along with community partnerships and outreach. Employee engagement, professional growth and learning, positive culture and relationships, recognition, health and wellbeing. Systems and services, communication, students of continuous improvement, community department services. And facilities and finance, quality of facilities and financial responsibility. So I will be sharing this. Take a peek at it. We are going to run this through a process, create a district team to really help develop this. But this will be a framework that we start off with to help guide us in, in our process as a district. So not necessarily a full new strategic plan, but just looking at what we're, and then this will come back as well. Moving on to other comments here because I'm being quick. Meskeaton County Public School Board Alliance Dinner. Please note Katie's email on that. We do need to have her respond by Friday. Do plan on attending. That is Wednesday, November twenty-ninth, and that is located at the Lake Buck Grill, which is at eighty-one Lake Shore Private Meskeaton Country Club. See the invitation. Program topic is Legal Hot Topics by Rodney Nizso. Also, I'd love to have you there if that works for you, but just make sure you get to the next meeting before I. And that is it for superintendent comments. I continue this.
Alright, item eight, new business. Item eight A, consideration of approving DECA calendar of events. Suggest the motion to approve the DECA calendar of events as presented. Moved by Scott, support by Amanda. Discussion?
So obviously, we heard from Jordan, but as well with your packet, you see courses offer information along with trips and events that are taking place.
Any additional discussion?
How are these costs covered? Like the Anaheim and all of that, can you get there? How does that? Uh, any grants and stuff? That will come with those that, if, when, or when we do make it, there is a certain budget, but it is fundraising opportunities outside of that as well. Or carry.
Yeah, DECA has their own funds for like.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passed. Item eight B, consideration of approving out-of-state travel for school garden support organization leadership institute. Suggest the motion to approve Dan Gorman to travel out-of-state to the School Garden Support Organization Leadership Institute in Scotts Valley, California on December fourth to the ninth. Moved by Amanda, support by Scott. Discussion?
As I have said previously, Dan does do a number of different conferences and associates, not only for his learning, but his presentations as well. So these are things and grants and opportunities that he gets for, to have these be funded. So this is not additional cost to the district, but it does allow him to get all the greatest ideas around the country, but then also be a presenter representative of the district today in a creative way as well. So this would be obviously more about the SC.
Additional discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item C, consideration of approving out-of-state travel for the School Nutrition Association Legislative Action Conference. Suggest the motion to approve Dan Gorman to travel out-of-state for the SNA conference in Washington DC, March thirteenth to fifth. Moved by Amanda, support by Scott. Discussion?
No more comments for previous.
Any additional questions?
Other outcomes that we get from this? Is there a planned report takeaway? We don't have it planned, but he does quite frequently bring back information, presentations. He shares the administration team along with obviously the workers that he has within the district. He also is a large part of West Michigan Food Service Group as well, and he presents to this information. So I, as far as a set criteria.
No, don't.
Probably, that would be a great idea.
Just not really an aim.
A trip, a trip record.
This is sequitur.
Any specifics within that report? Just take away these things that took place. I guess it just general comment if we require it generally for things that are not athletic based, that's.
Maybe that will be good.
Additional discussion and questions? All those in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Item D is the old policies for this reading.
Alright, in your packet, you did see the five new or changed policies. There will be a second reading next month as well. But we did meet with the policy committee. Fifteen forty is a new policy. This speaks to the administrative staff as far as reductions in recalls. It would be the same as it is within the support staff and professional staff upon the policies, but it speaks specifically to the administrative staff. With some districts that do have units of administrative staff, this just speaks to recall and reductions. That length of service or tenure status may only be considered, not necessarily the end of the open for that reduction or recall. Moving on to twenty-three seventy on my blended learning programming. Obviously, since the transitions from COVID in twenty-twenty with all the virtual learning, some things were in place and others have changed, but as far as virtual learning, this is just a more concise. As you can see, as far as student eligibility, some things were taken out, but then added back in other areas. The overall understanding needs to stay long and just make sure that our policy is integrated with state law as far as the number of hours and classes and things that can be taken as far as MTs are considered for virtual learning opportunities. Seventy-two seventeen is under the weapons. It's really just word changes here as far as the word, for instance, paintballs is now paintball. Guns is guns without the comma. School, add a comma. Sheriff, take off the S. So just a grammatical addition of the word whole more. And then also some citation down at the bottom of Michigan government, and our public schools and bio-public schools. This was, of course, case back in July twenty-seven, two thousand and eighteen, that escapes Michigan Supreme Court, vote four-three. They didn't really produce it to be a decision of the schools within that, so this is, we are what it is own. But then we obviously have conversations that are being made in place. Eighty-three oh five, information security. Just a capitalization from the word information from the line to big I. And then cross references down to bottom in that policy. And then eighty-five thirty-one, free and reduced free meals. We did, we did not, we're not saying that it has to, parents have to go out and be, provide information for eligibility. We will recommend it and have a look at that, but it is not necessarily required necessarily. You can also see the other additions, which seem pretty common sense, but obviously they must have taken place somewhere across some district. But such things as this, we shall prohibit the requiring a student who cannot pay for the school meal. Where's the negative? To wear wristband or hand stamp. We shall not have them perform chores or work to make them pay for school meals. We shall not require students to dispose after a meal it serves or deserve it to them to make them look good way. We should communicate directly with the student debt. When talking about a student debt, we should not communicate from others, but we should, as far as the technical. Email discussing negative on this student. Place of confidence, not verified. It's written for a reason. So pretty quick, easy updates on the policies for this update. Please take a closer look at those. We will have a final reading next month. We'll be having future conversations around motion intelligence. We will be having future conversations around motion intelligence, technological technology, questions around that, where that will lead down the road. Not that there are any policies, but we're going to have an understanding for us in the district. It's coming, and what does that mean for school districts as well. That is it for your old policies.
All right. So we, item nine is closed session contract negotiations. Cindy moved, Tom support. All those in favor? Oh, roll call, sorry. Roll call vote?
Mr. Ratt?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Mrs. Francis?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mr. Weisizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Newbar?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
All right, students, if you have agendas that need to be signed for class, please come on and get to signature.